Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Aloni and Moore's Parade, I'm Take Carl the Rock. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 75, Class 75. I just want to take a moment just to say thank you. Today is Class 75, we should talk about that, that's a round number, right? Class 75, right? We're talking about three cycles, right? So every 25 classes represents a seven, right? Because five plus two is seven. So we've gotten through three quarters so far, right? So Class 75, we want to commemorate it. We want to say thank you to all the Moores that have watched Classes 1 all the way through 75. Keeping in mind, in Class 1, we talked about what? How did the Moores lose the land? They lost it with a pin. How did the Moores get the land back? With a pin, right? What type of pin? A competent pin, right? Right, so we need constitutions, right? We need to ratify, deposit, promulgate, we're learning a lot about that, right? But at the same time, when you're celebrating, you must also understand your journey. And during your journey, sometimes people are going to throw tomatoes, right? So we must always understand about what's called higher self and lower self. So we want to say thank you to the Moores that being high vibration, higher self. But at the same time, we got the lower self Moores. For some reason, they continue to throw unwarranted tomatoes, right? So we want to say we have love for those Moores as well. For those Moores who have a misunderstanding. Don't understand the timing and what's going on in this new paradigm of Moores getting into true competency. Moores trying to uplift fallen humanity in a competent way. I want to remind all the Moores that during AMPAC's inauguration that took place on May 1st, 2021, AMPAC took the time to give special honors, to give flowers to other Moores that came before AMPAC. We mentioned Moores by their name or mentioned them by their appellation. We extended flowers to them as well as their organizations. So we did a good job of just giving honors to those Moores that came before AMPAC. Now, some Moores on that same list have decided to throw tomatoes, right? For whatever reason, we don't know. We'll leave that up to the young Moores to ask questions, right? So what we have to understand is this. We as Moores have to get out of our feelings because we have to now move forward, we got to focus. But I would be remiss if I did not say this to you at this time. You know, the good brother Jay-Z in one of his songs, "If You Can't Kill My Vibe", what did he say? "Up in the clouds, me and my spouse, rumors on the ground are getting too loud, please turn that crap down because you can't kill my vibe." What vibe? The vibe of this pin. See, me as the Chief Justice, Justice Jay Bay, I'm married to this pin. I took an oath to this pin, I took an oath to my constitution. And that constitution is my wife, that's my bride. So anybody that's throwing tomatoes at me and my wife, well, I take that as an insult. That's slander, and I'll do anything to protect my bride, my wife, which is my state. I took an oath to her, and I will protect her in any way that I can. So please turn down the crap because it's unnecessary. We got too much work to do. If you got time to throw tomatoes, that means you ain't got time to pick up your pen and write a competent state constitution. Who am I talking about? Well, y'all already know who it is. Mr. VHS tape throwing tomatoes. And Mr. Etymology is throwing subtle tomatoes. So we all have to understand one thing. The Moores who came before AMPAC, we've extended honors. And for those same Moores to turn around and throw tomatoes, it's unnecessary and unwarranted. And it won't be tolerated. Because you know why? Jay Bay don't play with this pin because this is my wife. And I will protect her from any type of slander. That must be understood. So today, we're going to get into this class. We're going to talk about the definition of nation. We're going to get into what's called the Charter of the United Nations, right? So by describing the Charter of the United Nations, we're going to take a deep dive into the word nation. But while I'm talking about the word nation, we're also going to tie that in to the Moores who came before us. Let's see if they took the same time of discernment while they were taping these VHS tapes to break this down the same way AMPAC's study session is doing to you today. Alright, so let's get into this, let's learn something today, alright? In correlation to the VHS tape Moores, alright? So as you know, AMPAC always opens up with this constitution. In order to be competent Moores, you need a competent constitution. And what makes your constitution competent? That it's been ratified, deposited, promulgated in accordance to international law, alright? So we'll talk about that today as it relates to who? Competent Moores and incompetent Moores. We'll talk about that today, alright? So let's go ahead and jump on in. So in the previous classes prior to Class 75, we went over a lot of treaties, a lot of information, right? Learning how to become competent Moores with our pin. Today, we will start to read over the Charter of the United Nations. It's a very important agreement. It's a very important contract. It's a multilateral treaty amongst all nations on planet Earth. More specifically, 193 member states. As well as all non-member states also have to take heed to this contract. Why? Because anyone using the word state is automatically have to now be obliged to this contract. Whether you become a signatory power to it or by acquiescence, this is the HR compliance of planet Earth. The Charter members are the HR Compliance Department of Planet Earth. They're the referee, they're the umpire, that must be understood, alright? So today, we're going to get into reading the preamble. We'll get into a few definitions, and we'll continue reading the Charter, okay? As we continue on for the next few classes, we're going to take a deep dive, alright? Okay. Okay, mother, so if I can have you to read the Charter of the United Nations, just the preamble, okay, at this time?
Okay. Charter of the United Nations. "We, the peoples of the United Nations, determined to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind and to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights in the dignity and worth of the human person in the equal rights of men and women and of nations large and small and to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained and to promote social progress and better standards of life in larger freedom and for these ends to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors and to unite our strength to maintain international peace and security and to ensure by the acceptance of principles and the institution of methods that armed force shall not be used save in the common interest and to employ international machinery for the promotion of the economic and social advancement of all peoples have resolved to combine our efforts to accomplish these aims. Accordingly, our respective governments through representatives assembled in the city of San Francisco who have exhibited their full powers found to be in good and due form have agreed to the present Charter of the United Nations and do hereby establish an international organization to be known as the United Nations."
Alright, thank you, mother. So that is the preamble, right? That is the annex of the Charter, okay? But like I told you, Moores, everything is always about the title. Everything, it tells you everything, right? Before you even get into the reading of the text. So what we need to do today, we need to get understanding is what is nations, right? Everybody has a basic understanding of it, but what does it mean in law? That is the question, right? Okay, let's get into this. Up here, I have a word, "Reading", Fourth Edition, Black's Law, Fourth Edition. Before we can even get into the definition of nations, you must understand that AMPAC's study session is all about doing what? Teaching law and history. From Class Number 1 up until Class 75, it's basically been a story about the Moores' history. How we lost the pin and how do we get it back? Through competency, right? Which means Moores have to learn how to read. Moores for decades have been proclaiming through their VHS tapes if they understand civics, if they know how to read. Well, let's put that to the test today, shall we? What is the definition of reading in Black's Law Dictionary, mother?
Reading, "The act of pronouncing aloud or of acquiring by actual inspection a knowledge of the contents of a writing or of a printed document. The act or art of perusing written or printed matter and considering its contents or meaning."
Alright, so that's reading, right? Using discernment, forensics, let's read it. Reading, "The act of pronouncing aloud or of acquiring by actual inspection." Inspection of what? Words. And how those words come together, right? Those words create what? A sentence, and a sentence creates a paragraph. And a paragraph can turn into a contract. Well, have the Moores done a good job of reading? Have the Moores done a good job of utilizing inspection of words? We'll put that to the test, okay? From the top, reading, "The act of pronouncing aloud or of acquiring by actual inspection a knowledge of the contents of a writing or printed document." So during your actual inspection is where you're going to get your knowledge of what? The contents, right? What does this inspection mean? What does inspection mean? Right, everybody knows what inspection is. Somebody comes in with a specific eye, forensics, right? White glove type of inspection. This is how Moores have to always read. You must, when you read a document, you must look at that document like it's a crossword puzzle. What is a crossword puzzle? A crossword puzzle is a square, right? It has a collage of letters. But if you look at a crossword puzzle on the surface, it's just like a bunch of letters. But the reality is there's words in it, and you have to use an inspection. You have to use forensics, discernment to determine where those words are. And sometimes it doesn't just jump out at you. Sometimes you can't read simply just left to right. Sometimes you gotta read what? Right to left. Sometimes you gotta read up to down and down to up and on a diagonal. That's a crossword puzzle. But the words are there, and what do the words represent? Solutions, answers. So sometimes we have to use an inspection and don't always look at things in a traditional way. You have to learn how to read. You gotta go deeper, you gotta read with your third eye. Your first two eyes in front of your head is for you to be nearsighted. Your third eye is to be what? Farsighted, and you gotta be able to use both at all times. You gotta know what's going on today and tomorrow. You have to use discernment and forensic. So let's see if the VHS tape Moores have been doing just that. Listen, "The act or art of perusing written or printed matter and considering its contents or meaning." What's perusing? Isn't that a fancy word? Alright, let's look it up. Okay, mother.
Peruse, verb, perusing. Read something typically in a thorough or careful way. Examine carefully or at length. Synonyms, study, scrutinize, look through, pore over, devour.
Okay, mother, thank you. Peruse, perusing. It means to read, read something typically in a thorough or careful way. Examine carefully or at length. That's an inspection. That's forensic, right? Synonym, study, study, study. Know what you are leaving. Scrutinize, you gotta scrutinize when you read. You gotta see what they're really trying to tell you. Sometimes they put words in code, you gotta decode it. It's called Morse code. Morse code? More? Code? Morse code? You have to know how to read. Scrutinize, look through it. Pore over it, devour. What does devour mean? What does devour mean?
Eat it up.
Eat it up, what else? Digest, right? Reader's digest. You see? These words have to be organic to you. You have to devour the words. Make it part of you, make the words come to life. These words have a lot of meaning when you read law. It's just not some words pressed against paper. Make it organic, make it become human to you. Let's see if the VHS tape Moores understood that. Let's continue. Nation, definition nation. Now, while we're looking up nation, let's go back. This is what Jermaine, right? We're talking about now the Charter of the United Nations. But what is nations? What is this all about? It's united what? United nations. But what is nations? Okay, let's start learning about that today. Nation, mother.
"A people or aggregation of men existing in the form of an organized juror society usually inhabiting a distinct portion of the earth speaking the same language, using the same customs, possessing historic continuity and distinguished from other like groups by their racial origin and characteristics and generally but not..."
Pause. Okay, before we read any further. Nation. A people, so a nation is a people, comma. People is the nation. Nation is the people, comma. Or aggregation of men and women, obviously, existing in the form of an organized juror society, comma. What are they trying to tell you? Okay, we looked this up before. Let's pause right here. What does juror mean? Juror, Fourth Edition, right? Black's Law Dictionary. Juror, what does juror mean? Okay, just a moment. Let's go to what's Jermaine, right? Let's go right at it. They're going to tell you in the last part of the definition. Okay, mother.
"The term juror society is used as the synonym of state or organized political community."
Okay. So juror means what? State. Juror is a synonym of state. But wait, Moores kept talking about we need a what? Nation-state. We need to organize, we need to come together, right? We need a juror society, right? We need to be appropriate persona su juris, right? But wait, the word juror means state. So in order to be juror, you need a state. And a state is what makes you juror because it's a synonym. Let's go back. So if the Moores been reading, they would have known that juror means what? State for the past decades, listen. So nation, "A people or aggregation of men existing in the form of an organized state society" "usually inhabiting a distinct portion of the earth." What's distinct? Matitude, latitude, the state. The borders of a state. Why do we know this? So distinct portion of the earth. Speaking to the same language, using the same customs, possessing historic continuity and distinguishing from the other like groups by their racial origin and characteristics and generally but not... Let's continue, mother.
Oh, not necessarily. "Living under the same government and sovereignty."
Pause. What's sovereignty? Sovereignty means state, right? Sovereignty means state, we're talking state, we're using discernment, we're reading, right? We're reading thoroughly, we're using forensics. Scrutinizing. It's crossword puzzle. You gotta pull out the words. You have to circle them. Let's continue.
"Besides the element of autonomy or self-government that is the independence of the community as a whole from the interference of any foreign power in its affairs or any subjection to such power, it is further necessary to the constitution of a nation that it should be an organized juror society that is both governing its own members by regular laws and defining and protecting their rights and respecting the rights and duties which attach to it as a constituent member of the family of nations. Such a society, says Patel, has her affairs and her interests. She deliberates and takes resolutions in common, thus becoming a moral person who possesses an understanding and will procure and will procure to herself and is susceptible of obligations and rights."
Alright. What are we learning here? Nation is about what? A state, and your constitution, they tell it to you verbatim. But the Moores on the VHS tapes, I guess they didn't read this. Listen, this nation, "Besides the element of autonomy or self-government that is the independence of the community," independence of what? The state as a whole from the interference of any foreign power. How do you get independence? State. That's the first box of the triple principle. What? Sovereignty and independence. You see how they're talking to you about your own triple principle that's in your treaty? That's how you get your foreign powers out of your affairs. Let's take it from the top. "Besides the element of autonomy," how do you get autonomy? You need your own state. "Or self-government, you can't have a government without what? An autonomous state." "That is the independence of the state as a whole from the interference of any foreign state in its affairs or any subjection to such power. It is further necessary," listen. "It is further necessary, it is further necessary to the constitution of a nation that it should be an organized juror society." Right there in your face. VHS tape Moores. Right here says what? Listen. It is necessary to have what? A constitution. If in fact you want to organize nation. Because nation means what? State, synonym. That it should be an organized juror state, organized state society. "That is both governing its own members by regular laws." How can you have laws without state? Only speak in that laws. "And defining and protecting their rights and respecting the rights and duties which attach to it as a constituent member of the family of nations." What's the family of nations? Huh? States, right? Okay, hold on. What's the family of nations? Charter of the United Nations, a family of nations, a family what? United what? States. Around planet Earth. Let's go back. So family of nation, family of states. "Such a society, says Patel, has her affairs, her affairs, her constitutions are her." Land is her, earth is her. Earth starts with an E. E, evolution. "Her affairs and her interests, she deliberates and takes resolutions in common, thus becoming a moral person who possesses an understanding and will procure to herself and is susceptible of obligations and rights." So when I tell you I'm married to this pin, I'm married to her. She is my bride. My job is to protect her as the Chief Judge of Constable Court and the Chief Judge of the Supreme Court of my state. And anyone who tries to slander my bride will find out that Jay Bay don't play. Listen. So what's happening here? The Moores said they knew the definition of nation. At least the VHS tape Moores said that, but is that true? Where is the VHS tape Moores? State. It don't exist, listen. Mother.
"The words nation and people are frequently used as synonyms, but there is a great difference between them. A nation is an aggregation of men and women speaking the same language, having the same customs and endowed with certain moral qualities which distinguish them from other groups of a like nature. It would follow from this definition that a nation is destined to form only one state."
Pause. Would the nation, okay. It would follow from this definition of nation that a nation is just destined to form only one state. Nation is a state. You hear people say, "I'm part of a nation." Oh, really? Tell me the name of your state. You say you're part of a state, oh, that's your nation. Synonyms, one state. Where is the one state that the Moores proclaim that they have that are on VHS tapes? It don't exist. Continuing, mother, and?
"And that it constitutes a one indivisible whole. Nevertheless, the history of every age presents us with nations divided into several states. Thus, Italy was for centuries divided among several different governments. The people is the collection of all citizens without distinction of rank or order. All men living under the same government compose the people of the state. In relation to the state, the citizens constitute the people."
Pause. Nation means what? People of the state. Moores been reading this for decades. Listen. "In relation to the state, the citizens constitute the people. In relation to the human race, they constitute the nation." Nation is what? State. This is too easy. Moores been reading the Black's Law Dictionary for decades. Which Moores? Moores on VHS tapes that are throwing tomatoes. Okay, mother.
"In relation to the state, the citizens constitute the people. In relation to the human race, they constitute the nation. A free nation is one not subject to a foreign government, whatever the constitution of the state. A people is free when all the citizens can participate in a certain measure in the direction and in the examination of public affairs."
Pause. A free nation, a free people, a free state is one not subject to a foreign government, not subject to who? The United States of America's foreign government. Whatever be the constitution of the state. The constitution of the state is what makes you what? A free nation. Do the VHS tape Moores have a constitution? No. "A people is free when all the citizens can participate in a certain measure in the direction and in examination of public affairs." What's the public affairs? What is public? You know what's public? Constitution. That's what's public. Everything else is private law. Constitution is public law. It's on the record. It's substantive law. Everything else is private, i.e. just right in your mouth. Period. Mother.
"The people is a political body brought into existence by community of laws and the people may perish with these laws. The nation is the moral body, independent of political revolutions because it is constituted by inborn qualities which render it indissoluble. The state is the people organized into a political body."
Thank you, mother. The state is the people organized into a political, political, political body. That's nation. But wait. The Moores say all the time, instead of talking about nation, what do they say? The order of the day is? Nationality, right? Moores will say the order of the day is nationality. Let's see if the Moores on the VHS tape was talking about nationality that they read the definition nationality? Let's read it, mother.
"Nationality, that quality or character which arises from the fact of a person's belonging to a nation or state."
Pause. Moores kept saying nationality is the order of the day on their VHS tapes. Listen. Nationality, "The qualia character which arises from the fact of a person belonging to a..." Of a person belonging to a. State. Moors been reading this for decades. Why didn't we comprehend this? Maybe it's because we can't. Read. And those that can read won't. Or many those who read it and comprehended it just didn't want to share it with you. But we gonna share it today, because you gonna learn today. About what you didn't learn on your VHS tapes. Listen. Nationality, let's read it again, since it's the order of the day. Nationality, that quality of character which arises from the fact of a person belonging to a state. So nationality arises from the fact of a person belonging to a state. Moors been talking about nationality for decades. Where's your states, Moors? Continuing, mother.
Nationality determines the political status of the individual, especially with reference to allegiance. While domicile determines his civil status. Nationality arises either by birth or by naturalization. According to Savigny, nationality is also used as opposed to. Territoriality for the purpose of distinguishing the case of a nation having no national territory.
Did you catch it? Let's see if the VHS tape Moors caught it. Listen. Nationality terms the political status, the political. Status of the individual, especially with reference to allegiance. Moors always talking about status, right? Listen, to the allegiance while domicile determines his civil status. Right? Nationality arises either by birth or by naturalization. According to Savigny. Nationality is also used as opposed. To territoriality for. The purpose of distinguishing, distinguishing, distinguishing. The case of a nation having no national territory. Who didn't have no national territory? Moors. Moors didn't have an identified distinguished. Territory called a state that had borders. So they tell you right here in the Black Law Dictionary. They're talking about some nation. The nation of who? Moors. Moors having no national territory. What's a territory? State. What identifies a state? Constitution. And what's in the constitution? Identified dominions, i.e. territory, i.e. the frontier of your land. The Moors talk about this on the VHS tapes? No. Now let's look at this word. Status. Moors say it's not racism, it's what? Status. Oh, okay. Let's take a look at it. Right, status of. Status. Mother.
Standing state or condition.
Pause. What is status? The Moors say it's not racism, it's your status. Okay, then what's your status, Moors? What did you teach Moors on your VHS tapes about status? Standing state or condition. Are you standing in your state? That now sets forth your conditions? What's the condition of your state? That talks about your standing? You gotta understand what's happening here. Moors kept talking about status was the problem. Okay, how do you fix your status? You need a state. It's right there in the definition. Moors been talking about this Black Law Dictionary for decades. And what did they say? Don't believe me, go do the research. I did the research. I used this survey. We established ANPAC as a state. February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Had a public inauguration, May first, twenty twenty one. Now let me tell the Moors something that's probably none of your business, but I'm gonna tell you anyway. I started studying around the spring of twenty eighteen. Couldn't even spell the word more, didn't know what it was. In the spring of twenty eighteen. Only been studying for four years. But you know what? I accomplished as an individual alone with my fellow constituents of my state. I started studying in spring of twenty eighteen. It took me a whole year before I told the first person. About Moors, because I wanted to study it first, because I know when I put my name on something, people have a tendency to believe it. So I wanted to study it first. The first person I told about the Moors was my best friend Kanye Chobe. At that time, he was Kanye Robinson, a black man. This very day, now he's the consul general of a competent state. So I started studying in twenty eighteen. Told my best friend about it in twenty nineteen. My best friend said, man, you gotta start teaching classes. So I started teaching classes in twenty twenty. Signed the constitution, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. So within three years from the first time I learned how to spell the word more, I ended up with a constitution, a competent constitution in my hands. About February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. What does that mean? Today being class seventy five, three cycles of twenty five, five plus two is seven. So from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one is how many years? Three. How many days in a week? Seven. How many days in a month? Seven. How many days in a year? Seven. So if it's seven days in a year. It took three years to be a competent Moors based upon having a competent constitution. That's seven, seven, seven. That's three years. It didn't take me no ten or twenty years to figure this out. But yet Moors want to throw tomatoes that's been studying for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. I don't get it. We all in this together. Incompetent and competent Moors are all in this together. Because the colonists don't care whether you're competent or incompetent, they just know that you are a threat to them. Because of who you are. Because they know you don't know who you are. So what are they doing? Exercising genocide against all of us. We're all in this together. We don't have time to throw tomatoes. What you gonna learn today? Listen. Status. Standing state or condition. Right? Moors been studying status for decades, Black Law Dictionary, and don't know it means state. Or they knew it meant state and didn't want to tell it to who? You. Okay. So political status, right? What about political status of a nationality? Okay, let's go to what Barack H. Obama tried to tell the VHS tape Moors. What did Barack H. Obama try to tell us in twenty ten? When he signed off on the rights of indigenous people that Bush wouldn't sign in two thousand and seven? Who put the rights of indigenous people together? I'll tell you who. The Charter of the United Nations, Member States. Listen. So the rights of indigenous people, Obama signed it, right? Keep in mind the history. Obama in two thousand and nine goes to Cairo, Egypt. He tells the whole world. About the Moors treaties. He talks about the Treaty of Tripoli, Article eleven, it talks about what? Treaty rights and laws. Go read it. He was trying to point out. Everything is about treaties. For who? Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors. Of what? The empire. Go back and look at YouTube, look up Barack H. Obama, Cairo, Egypt, two thousand and nine. Listen to his speech. He gonna tell you the secrets. He gonna tell you about the NFL players, et cetera. They're all who? Moors. Moors are who? Stateless, because they don't know they're Moors. Okay, so why are we going on the rights of indigenous people? Political, political, right? We're talking political. Because Moors kept talking about nationality is the order of the day, not understanding they needed a state. And the state is about what? Political status. Rights for indigenous people. We gotta go through this. Today is the seventy fifth class. That's three cycles of twenty five. Twenty five was. Twenty five is what? Five plus two equals seven. Right? Seven. Seven, seven, seven. Listen. Now I'm gonna go to page. Seven. On my document. Right, when I put it into PDF. Seven. What was the first thing on the rights of indigenous people? Article one, one. What does it say, mother?
Indigenous peoples have the right to the full enjoyment as a collective or as individuals. Of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Charter of the United Nations. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights and International Human Rights Law.
Okay, so article one is about what? The, if you want full enjoyment, how to get full enjoyment? You need full powers. How to get full powers? Only through a state with your pen. Until then, you only have limited powers that makes you three fifths person. So the United Nations is trying to tell you something. Article one, go back and do what? Study the Charter. The Charter tells you about, a lot about what? Human rights, human rights and human rights. They say it three times. But then you come on down to article four. Let's see if the VHS tape Moors talked about article four. What does article four say? Okay, mother.
Indigenous peoples in exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government. In matters relating to their internal and local affairs. As well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions.
Okay, what, what did we learn about these words? Autonomy. And self-government. Okay. We learned about it where? Let's go back to it. When we was reading, right? When were we reading? About nationality, right? Nationality. What else were we reading about? Let's go back up. Were you reading about what? Nation, right? Nation, right? So the nation, definition of nation, when you go up and you look at the word nation. Nation would tell you what? You need autonomy. Or self-government. Nation. What was Barack H. Obama trying to tell the Moors who were teaching on VHS tapes? What was he trying to get across to the Moors? He said, okay. Go back to the rights of indigenous people, and he put a lot of his political willpower on the line to tell the Moors. They need his self-determination as human beings to have autonomy and self-government, article four. This is why he signed it. He tried to send Morse code to Moors that have VHS tapes. Article five.
Indigenous peoples have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social. And cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully. If they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
Okay, so you need political. What does political mean? Political means what? State, right? So political, political. State. Right? Everything means state. But what's the problem? I'll tell you the problem. Listen. We don't know how to read. The words been in front of our faces for decades. The Moors said, all the Moors need to go out and get a three hundred dollar Black Law Dictionary. And still don't know how to read it, just because you got it in your possession, don't mean nothing if you don't know how to read. The colonists put all the answers in front of our faces where? In a book. You know why they put in the book? Because they know people can't read. And those who can't read won't go back and read it. And maybe those that can read it, read it and won't share it with you. But ANPAC study session will share it. You gonna learn today. Okay, mother. Article six for me, please. Rights of indigenous people.
Every indigenous individual has the right to a nationality.
Okay, how do you end up with a nationality if you don't have no state? Because didn't we look up nation? And nation said state. An organized dual society where the people are members of that state. Why do you think the first five articles ended up at article six to tell you what? Moors, what type of Moors? Competent Moors of the state. Have a right to a nationality. Until then, you don't have a right to your nationality. You just conquered people's status, right? We talked about that. But wait a minute. Etymology. Oh, the Moors love the word etymology. Let's look at an etymology breakdown. Of the word nationality, shall we? Since we got etymology specialists out there that keep throwing tomatoes. Listen. Mother, nationality.
Noun, sixteen nineties, separate existence as a nation, national unity and integrity. From nation plus al plus dash it, itty. In some usages perhaps from French nationalité. As fact of belonging to or being a citizen of a particular state. From eighteen twenty eight gradually shading into race, ethnicity. Meaning a racial or ethnic group is by eighteen thirty two related nationalities.
Okay. Sounds easy enough. Well, let's see if the VHS tape Moors and the etymology specialist Moors actually read it. Because if they read it, they would already have by now what? A state. Listen. Nationality from the etymology breakdown. Sixteen nineties, separate existence as a nation. How you become separate? You need a state. Constitution outlines your borders. Right? But why didn't the etymology specialist tell you that you need a separate existence? Of what? Nation, state. See how we stringing these words together? Separate existence of a state. State makes you separate. This is etymology. This is a breakdown. Listen. National unity and integrity. What about the word integrity? Oh, that's the second box of the triple principle of the Act Algeciras. And what's the second box? Integrity of what? Domains. What outlines your domains? I'll show you. Hold on. Constitution. Okay, this is ANPAC's constitution. It talks about what? Integrity. What about integrity? Integrity of domain, which is the second box of the triple principle that gets into what? Y'all already know it. Domains. Let me read it for you real quick, if you don't mind, shall we? Dominions. Domain. Integrity of domains. Listen. Mixtape Moors. The dominions for a lot of Moors, Pan Amanti, Colorado. Now include all land, air, and waterways within latitude thirty seven degrees north to forty one degrees north. By longitude, one or two degrees west to one oh nine degrees west. Our earth dominions are three hundred and eighty miles long east to west. And two hundred and eighty miles wide north to south. With the geographic center point being at latitude thirty eight degrees fifty nine point nine feet. North by longitude, one oh five degrees thirty eight point five feet west. The total area of land and waterways is one hundred and four thousand one hundred and one square miles. One hundred and three thousand seven hundred thirty square miles of land and three hundred and seventy one square miles of water. The lowest point is three thousand three hundred fifteen feet above sea level known as Arkansas River. And the highest point is fourteen thousand four hundred and forty feet above sea level known as Mount Arrow. These are the dominions from the center of the earth. Through our divine footprint into the father's reaches of the cosmos, upon which we thrive, through which we heal, and which we are restored. You ever seen that on a VHS tape? No. So if the etymology specialists. Actually knew how to read, they would know that separate existence of a state. Now sets up your integrity of domains. From nation, now they're breaking it down, right? Because etymology Moors love to break down words. Let's see if they actually read it. Nation plus al plus itty, right? Itty. Nationality, nationality, in some uses perhaps from French nationality. As fact of belonging to or being a citizen of a particular state. So Moors been studying etymology dictionary. Reading the word nationality, because nationality is the order of the day. And they don't realize that by using fact of belonging to a state, that easy crossword puzzle. that easy crossword puzzle. Circle the words. Mister etymology. Stop throwing tomatoes and circle words. Put down the hate and pick up a constitution. For your state. From eighteen twenty-eight gradually shading into ethnicity, meaning a racial or ethnic group, is by eighteen thirty-two related nationalities. But wait. We got nationality now. Person, place, or thing. What's the person, place, or thing? State is a person, place, or thing. Wait. Al, iti. Okay, listen. Let's break this on down, shall we? Mother, al.
In word, in words from Arabic or assumed to be, it is the definite article V, sometimes rendered in English al or el, often assimilated to following consonants s, s, r, m, n, etc. Examples include almanac, alchemy, alcohol, algebra.
Oh, okay. So nationality got the word al, and it's talking about il, right? Because al is an important word in moor science, right? Etymology. Okay? So, once we understand the word al, because now we're looking at the breakdown of nation, al, al is talking about who? The al's and the il's. Who knows? Moors. Right? We're breaking it down. Okay. I. Mother.
Word-forming element making abstract nouns from adjectives and meaning condition or quality of being. Nationality?
Uh-huh.
From Middle English ite, from old French et, modern French ite, and directly from Latin itatem. Uh, nominative etas, suffix denoting state or condition, composed of i from the stem or else a connective, plus the common abstract suffix tas, si, tai.
Okay, thank you, mother. I. Nationality, right? Let's go back up. Let's get a refresh. Nationality, nationality, iti, right? It's a breakdown. This is etymology. This is an etymology class we in right now. Okay, iti. Word-forming element making abstract nouns from adjectives and meaning condition. Remember, we looked up status, talked about condition, state, status? Okay, let's go back to it. See if I can find it. Status. State, condition. Okay, let's go back to it. Condition. State, listen. Or quality of being, from Middle English, from old French et, modern French it, and directly from addendum, nominative, it is suffix denoting state or condition. So nationality is by what? Statehood. For who? Al's and il's. That once they have a state, they have what? A nationality. Because the nationality says you have a separate existence of a state, but now you can maintain your integrity of domains. You ever seen it broke down like this on a VHS tape? No? What's this all about? Noah Droual Lee. Noah Droual Lee said, study, 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 three times. And when you have studied well, and I would ask me, you would ask me what to study next, I would reply, study yourself. What are you talking about? Noble? Okay. I'm going to leave the European here. Just long enough to teach you how to run a government. Noah Droual Lee. What do he want us to study? Study, set, study. Ourselves, and what about yourself? You were supposed to be studying who? Europeans who are running our government as trustees, so you can learn how to do what? They will teach you how to run a government, what type of government? A competent moors government to be the sheriff and authority of the state. Then you have a nationality to enforce based upon your distinct crust of the earth, commonly known as the territory of your state. Your uti passaditis jurisdiction. Did you hear about uti passaditis in the VHS tapes? No? What's happening? Here's the problem, moors. NAFC. NAFC. New acronym, NAFC. What are NAFCs? Negroes, blacks, coloreds, and Americans. What type of Americans? Marsh Americans, unfortunately. Why? Because moors Americans are still in the political status as who? Blacks. This is why you look in the American Standard Dictionary and say black of more. Look it up. Black of more. Black of more, noun. So. Black of more. What's happening? The moors Americans who are not Americans, they're Moroccans, have failed to return to Morocco to consent to the entire laws of the empire. So therefore, it says they have a return to Morocco through the entire laws of the empire. What's that mean? That mean their political status is still what? Black of more. So the acronym is Negro, Black, Colored, American. What type of American? Marsh American, and I don't say that to be insensitive. I tell you that to tell you the truth. I just gave you a history lesson on the word nation, nationality. Status means you're of a state, and if you're not of a state, that means either you still over here as a citizen of the United States, or you're just simply stateless. You got three options. You in the jurisdiction of the United States? Stateless? Or you've returned to Morocco to consent through application to become a competent moor with a moor state government. So the acronym is NAFC. Stands for Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, Americans. And that's the truth. That's not a negative. We have to tell the truth. That's the only way we wanna fix this. I'll say it again. Noah Droual Lee said what? Study, 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 right? Three. Seven, seven, seven. And when you have studied well, I would ask, you would ask me what to study next? I would reply, study yourself. See, if you went to Noah Droual Lee and asked him, what should I study next? He already knew what? You didn't know the answer to the test. He knew you hadn't followed the instructions, because the instructions he told you do what? Study yourself to see if you actually have been studying what? The Europeans. And through the Europeans, you would have learned government, because he said, let them teach you how to run a government. Can we go back and look at the VHS tapes and the etymology classes that taught you how to run a government, not you have a state constitution? No? Look at this. Study yourself, so you do what? Self-government. So you can self what? Government. So you can self-government. So you can self-government. Where did we see that? Oh, okay. Let me show you what Obama tried to tell the moors. That's on the mixtape. So you can self-government, rights indigenous people. Self-government. You see? This is too easy. I've been studying for years. Had a constitution within three, along with my constituents of the state. But moors wanna throw tomatoes. Why? Maybe because they ain't been reading. What other reason why? Well, you need to go ask them yourself. Because Noah Droual Lee said what? Study yourself. And ask them how they studied themselves. Listen. What did the instructions say? This is the Treaty of Madrid, commonly known as the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Says what? Any subject of Morocco has been naturalized in a foreign country must choose between entire submissions to the laws of the empire. And what are the laws of the empire? Constitutions and treaties. Let's go back to United Nations. What are the United Nations trying to tell you in the preamble? We'll break down the preamble. Listen. You need to do what? To establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties. Instructions. Oh, what's the obligations of treaties, moors? Okay. That any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in United States of America and the United States International Organization must choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. What's the empire? What represents the empire right now? Treaties. Because treaties is what? Supreme law of the land. As a start to wrap up. Which should be our focus instead of throwing tomatoes? That dude. Mister JP Morgan, i.e. the Federal Reserve bankers, right? Who are governing over what? Your moors land, this represents the land, and they're controlling the monopoly, and instead of us focusing on him. Because he's governing the trust, what's the trust? The land and the people. The movable and immovable property. We should be focusing on these people and these people who represent this name. Because the Federal Reserve members, the seven, the seven Federal Reserve members act as trustees, the great seal of the trustees are governing over who? They're governing over the United States Corporation, and the United States Corporation, all their organs are the managers. Trustees. Managers. What are they managing right now? Managing two things. The United States of America, so the United States is acting as attorneys, representatives, constituents, to represent the United States of America, because the United States of America is void of a government. It's absent of three branches of government. There is no president of the United States of America. I showed you videos where the president takes his oath to who? The United States. So all their three branches of government, the executive branch, legislative, and judicial branch, they act as managers over our vast estate. And the trustee members oversee them. And they oversee the United States of America as a name, and who else do they oversee? Negroes, blacks, and coloreds. Right? Right? Why? Because we su- suffer from a lack of knowledge of self. Self what? Self-discipline and self-governance. It's all in here. And in the meantime. This dude JP Morgan and the bankers are governing over our monopoly through this seal. And they're governing over these managers, Department of Justice, etc. They're governing over all the NAFCs. And they're governing on behalf of the United States of America as trustees. While the moors are constantly throwing tomatoes. And it's unwarranted, because we all in this together. We have to come into an organized jewel society. Listen. This is the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties. Of May twenty-third nineteen sixty-nine. Listen. The United States as a federal corporation domestically, they're known as a federal corporation according to their code, right? Title twenty-eight, United States Code three thousand two, section fifteen A, says they're a federal corporation. Right? According to international law, they are what? According to Article two of the Vienna Convention on Law of Treaties, Article two, it says for the purpose of the present convention. Section I. International organization means an intergovernmental organization. This is who he's supposed to be dealing with. The United States is an international organization. It is a constituent corporation that represents the United States of America as constituent. Article five, mother.
Treaties constituting international organizations and treaties adopted within an international organization. The present convention applies to any treaty which is the constituent instrument of an international organization and to any treaty adopted within an international organization without prejudice to any relevant rules of the organization.
Okay, so now we're finding out, what is this constituent word? Y'all hear me say constituent, right? So the United States is a constituent, i.e. attorney, i.e. an agent, who's working as a power attorney on behalf of the United States of America. Because the United States of America is void of three branches of government. So the agent is representing the United States of America as a constituent. Listen. The present convention applies to any treaty which is the constituent instrument of an international organization. So they're writing this clause for people such as the United States who's representing a state called the United States of America. And to any treaty adopted within international organization, so it's a treaty adopted within an international organization. So the United States has been adopting treaties on behalf of the United States of America as a power attorney without prejudice to any relevant rules of the organization. Okay, listen. Article twenty goes a little deeper. Mother.
Acceptance of an objection to reservations. One, a reservation expressly authorized by a treaty does not require any subsequent acceptance by the other contracting states unless the treaty so provides.
Continue.
Two, when it appears from a limited number of the negotiating states and the object and purpose of a treaty, that the application of the treaty in its entirety between all the parties is an essential condition of the consent of each one to be bound by the treaty, a reservation requires acceptance by all the parties.
All right. Thank you, mother. So what's happening? The United States as an international organization, Article five, treaties constituting international organizations. Treaties constituting the United States International Organization and treaties adopted within the United States organization. They act as a representative on behalf of the United States. Listen. Mother, constituent.
He who gives authority to another to act for him. The term is used as a correl- correlative to attorney, to denote one who constitutes another his agent or invests the other with authority to act for him. It is also used in the language of politics as a correlative to representative, the constituents of a legislator being those whom he represents and whose interests he is to care for in public affairs, usually the electors of his district.
Okay, constituent, right? We're learning this word in the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine that governs treaties. It's the rules and regulations on how to govern treaties between states. He who gives authority to other to act for him. So what happened? In the Act of Congress of February twenty-first eighteen seventy-one, what happened? The United States of America created the United States, and the United States could do what? The United States of America gave authority to another to act for him, to act for the United States of America. So the United States is acting for the United States of America. Listen. The term is used as a correl- to attorney. So the United States is acting like an attorney, okay? To denote one who consti- constituents, constitutes. To denote one who constitutes another his agent. So the attorney is an agent, we'll learn a lot more about the word agent as we move forward in our studies, okay? You'll learn more about the word agent in an international resolution referred to as the draft articles of international organization. So look up the draft articles of international organizations of the year twenty-eleven, okay? You'll see the word agent. Agent or invest the other with authority to act for him. So the United States of America has vested the powers into the United States Corporation. As powerful attorneys, as agents, to have the authority to act for the United States of America. They act as what? Representatives. Constituents, right? Dealing with what? As legislators. So the legislators and the executive branch are working as representatives, constituents. With the authority that they got from the United States of America to act as agents and attorneys. Reading it backwards, see I'm reading it backwards? That's the crossword puzzle, right? Cause what? The United States of America did what? He who gives authority to another to act for him. So what's happening? Go back to it. So the United States of America. On February twenty-first eighteen seventy-one, through the Act of Congress created the United States. And during the United States started to file bankrupt, what'd they do? They brought in bankers to inject funds into the United States. Eighteen ninety-three JP Morgan injected sixty million back in eighteen ninety-three. Now the bankers, seven bankers of the Federal Reserve now are trustees over the corporation of the United States. And the United States is the manager, trustee, managers. Manage the United States of America's name only. And they're governing over who? Okay. Navcos. As I start to wrap up. I pointed out a lot, I pointed out a lot of problems. But there's no use to point out problems unless you have solutions. What's the solution to all this? Incompetent, incompetent Moors are all in this together. We all are brothers and sisters, all of us been colonized, all of us been naturalized. This is not a game. This is life or death, when you start messing around with who? These people and their money. It ain't their money. They're the trustees over your money, but they don't wanna give it back to you. And we need all hands on deck. We must act as a battalion, as a, as a one movement of people, lockstep. Your left, your left, your left, right, all of us. Get out of your feelings. Put your VHS tape down and pick up a stick. So in class seventy-six. We'll go back as a refresher and look up chapter six that talked about what? How to govern under Article one oh six to govern over who? This dude. And your monopoly. Cause it all belongs to you. And he won't give it back unless you have a competent pen of your state. So I conclude by saying this. I love all the Moors. If you go back and look at the inauguration of AMPA, of May first twenty twenty-one. I personally, through my proclamation as Justice J Bay, as I said in my public inauguration. I gave flowers and honors to all the Moors that came before AMPA. And I'm gonna leave it at that, at that. I honor all the Moors. But we got a lot of work to do, we ain't got time to keep looking in the rearview mirror. That's the reason why the windshield is way bigger, because your future is brighter. I end with that. Islam.